Good job.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today's Tuesday, January 9th, 2018. This is a voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. Mayor Protem, do you have any introductions today?
It's just great to see some new people in the audience. And Steve Orwin's there with APS and the new director from APS, Mackenzie. Welcome.
And Councilman Siskah has announced my...
That's all right, Mayor. I couldn't announce it till I was about 12 years old, so, you know, that's okay. My announcement is, is that I found out on 3TV this morning that today is National Law Enforcement Personnel Appreciation Day. And so, please thank our law enforcement personnel. Anytime you see them out there on the street, wave at them as they go by in the car and put a smile on their face. And there is one right there who is an upstanding example of...
(applause)
Chief?
You're welcome, and thank you for what you do.
And Mayor, I do have one other thing, because I was so excited to learn that Expedia named Prescott as one of the 18 cities in the United States that you must visit in 2018. That's a huge deal for us, though. Thank you, Expedia.
Thank you. All right, we have an invocation today from Pastor Sokolowski with the American Lutheran Church, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Blair.
Heavenly Father, we come humbly before you right now, and we just thank you so much for the opportunity to serve, to serve you and to serve this community. We thank you, Lord, for the law enforcement individuals that serve in that capacity, and we just honor them as well. And we honor everybody here, God, that is here to make Prescott a city that is respectable and that is above reproach, and that shows your values, your kindness, your love. And so, Lord, just be with us during this meeting. I pray, God, that all that we say would be words that would give you glory and honor, in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's call roll.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Here.
Mayor Protem Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Shoal.
Here.
Councilman Siskah.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Before we get to proclamations, I'd like to remind everyone that we do have comment cards back here that you can fill out if you'd like to speak on one of the agenda items. We do ask that you would fill out one comment card per agenda item. And reminding you that we do have three minutes per speaker. We have a new little device here on the podium today that will help speakers know when their time is up. So, when you see the yellow light, you have 30 seconds before you're done, and the red light goes off. So, that'll keep me from having to interrupt speakers. So, please fill those comment cards out, get them to Cindy, or who can get them up here to the clerk, and make sure that you fill out one per agenda item. All right, let's move to proclamations.
Martin Luther King Jr. Day.
Proclamation, Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service, January 15th, 2018. Whereas Dr. King taught us about equality for all, we will remember to treat all people with dignity and justice. And whereas Dr. King had a dream that his teachings be manifested for all people everywhere, and to keep working to make his dream a reality in our community. Now therefore, Greg Mangarelli, Mayor of the City of Prescott, does hereby recognize January 15th, 2018, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service, and urge all citizens of Prescott to celebrate, remember, and pay tribute to the legacy of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and use his teachings to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges in our community throughout the year. And I encourage you all to join me on Monday, the 15th, at 11:00 a.m. at the First Methodist Church on 505 Gurley Street. We'll be having a celebration, and I'll be reading this proclamation there as well. And so, did you guys have a couple of words you'd like to say?
As you may or may not know, there's an additional celebration at St. Luke Evangelist Christian Church. That's in Dewey, Arizona. It is at 6:00 p.m. on January 15th, and that is a Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration as well. It'll be a one-hour service there.[318.12][323.22](applause)
The next proclamation is Youth Mentoring Month.
Come on up, Justin Juliana. This is just such a privilege for me to do this, as I've been working with Big Brothers Big Sisters this past year, and what a wonderful organization. And yes, let's please have APS up with us. Thank you. Youth Mentoring Month. Whereas youth mentorship can lead to higher education graduation rates, improved behavior, boosted self-esteem, and a decreased likelihood of initiating drug and alcohol use. And whereas adults who regularly serve others are more likely to have lower blood pressure and longer lifespan. Whereas people who volunteer have higher self-esteem, a sense of fulfillment, and a stronger connection to their community where they become a volunteer. Whereas vulnerable youth who have been mentored are 90% more likely to become mentors in the future. Whereas residents are encouraged to take advantage of the many youth mentoring organizations available here in our communities. Now therefore, Greg Mangarelli, Mayor of the City of Prescott in Arizona, in partnership with Yabapai Big Brothers Big Sisters and Arizona Public Service Company, does hereby declare January 2018 as Youth Mentoring Month. And for the good of the community, the mayor urges residents to seek mentoring opportunities to enhance their lives and the lives of our youth. And I will tell you that tonight we are going to light City Hall purple, and it will remain purple for the remainder of the month. So, Juliana, can I introduce you first?
Please, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Mangarelli, and our board member, and also our honorary Chair of the Women of Influence, Billy Orr. You do such good work in our community, and we're so honored to accept the proclamation from you, soon to be big sister. And so, many of you here, as I look in the audience, and I see those on council behind me, have been longtime supporters of our mission as bigs and donors. And we can't do the work that we are known for without the collective support of our community. Police Chief Black, I cannot leave without acknowledging your wonderful role model as a big sister to a little girl here in the community, and we share your story so much to inspire others. I want to turn this over to our recruitment specialist, Justin Corbell, who has been the project manager on Youth Mentoring Month for us, but want to thank everyone here for making this possible and increasing an awareness of all the youth-serving organizations in our community that do such good work for our children. Justin?
Does this go high enough for me, or...
(laughing)
Thank you so much. I just want to share a few words. My name is Justin Corbell. I'm also a big brother. And I guess when I think back to my experience in Big Brothers Big Sisters, I've been a big for four and a half years now. And in that time, I think the most valuable thing I've gathered is perspective. It's just a very interesting perspective. I grew up in Chino Valley, so I grew up in Chino Valley, you know, boy, grew up very country, and I never really went to the other side of town. And then I got matched to my first little brother, and he was on the other side of town, and he was in a very, you know, a much less fortunate neighborhood. And it really brought light to me the need that is present for bigs in this area. And I would encourage you all to see the impact that I've seen each and every day. I have a current little brother. He's 16, so God help me. But he's a great kid, and, you know, we do a lot of really amazing things. But I just, I want you all to, I want to encourage everyone to at least try to get more information about what it takes to be a mentor. We're bringing light all the different organizations, you know, there's other organizations that serve youth. But Big Brothers Big Sisters, I can tell you from my own experience, it's changed my life. It's changed a lot of lives. And I would love to, if you want to talk to me more, I'd love to talk to you about becoming a big. Thank you.
And just don't we give you this to take back to the office?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.[595.41][595.41](applause)
All right, let's move on to the consent agendas. Is there anything on the consent agenda that a member would like to pull or discuss further?
Mayor? I'd like to pull 8E, 8H, 8I, and 9B.
E, H, EH, and I. Is that what you said?
EH, I, and 9B.
Okay. Let's work on EH and I first. And yet, before we get to that, let's approve what's remaining on the consent agenda. Hear motion on that.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda except for items EH and I, 8A through HG, HJ, except for those items.
Okay, thank you. Got a motion and second. Please vote.
I'm sorry, who's second? Councilman Lamerson.
Councilman Lamerson.
Thank you.
Please vote.
Councilman Blair, can you please vote? Passes 7-0.
Okay, thank you. Let's look at item 8E, open for discussion.
I think E and I are kind of combined, since we're asking for a addition to the contract that was awarded for the use of the Acela software program, initially awarded for $250,000. It's now gone up to $375,000, and we're adding, from my understanding, an additional $43,000 in cost to this system. So, I'm concerned about the escalating growth of this contract, and when is it going to end? So, can somebody answer my questions on that?
Nate's probably the best person to address some of the concerns you shared.
Mayor, Councilman, my name is Nate Keegan. I'm the IT Director for the City of Prescott. Councilman Good, I definitely understand your concern. I have the same concern. One of the challenges with this type of project is we've been on the software, the one we replaced with Acela, since 1998. And it's almost like ripping up in a house. When you rip open a house, you hope for the best. You have a budget. You plan for that. Next thing you know, it was built out of solid lead. It has asbestos in it. It's a really difficult thing to quantify down to the nth degree. So, what you're seeing here are some bleed-over costs. And for example, item E is additional licenses for the fire department to use Acela. Item I is a services contract for Acela, for items that the Public Works Department is specifically interested in, which were outside the original scope of what this project would include.
So, like a lot of business agreements where you have X number of users in a software program, and you're going to expand that, there's additional costs?
Exactly. In our old system, CRW, we had unlimited users. Everybody in the city could use it if they wanted to. Acela's not that way. When the City of Prescott, which was IT in several departments in concert, picked Acela, at the time, the fire department was using a different software package, so it overlaps with Acela as far as fire inspections. So, your choice is, we could do it over here, we could do it over here. And during the course of this project, that shifted from here to Acela, which is what item E is. What you see represented before you today is item E for that purpose.
And then I is, I'm assuming, some kind of a unique new capability that the fire department really has a need for?
I is actually driven by the Public Works Department. I'm sure Craig Dotson can speak to exactly what they're looking for for that, but you're exactly right on that.
I've had a chance to look at the Acela program, and my orientation, and I know it's a powerful software system. It's just, in my professional experience, working with robust software implementation, sometimes these costs can grow almost out of control. And at some point, sometimes you have to say, it's time for us to relook at this cost overall, because there may be new programs out there that can do as well, if not more, for less expense. How long is this contract going to continue?
This contract will be expiring at the end of this fiscal year, so the end of June of 2018. And I completely agree with what you're saying, where you don't want to have a nonstop ending parade of, can you add this, can you add that? And what you really don't want to do, we don't want to do, and those are royal we, is we don't want to end up taking something and trying to turn it into something it's not. And the course of doing that, including massive expense, massive staff time, and ending up with something that's kind of a, the best of nothing and the worst of a lot of things, if that makes sense.
Thank you. That's all the questions I had on these two items.
Okay. You want to move on to H?
Well, H, my concern here is going outside for professional consulting services for a strategic plan that seems like it should be within the capabilities of our chief and his leadership staff. So, could you explain the necessity for that, Chief?
Most certainly. Back in, shortly after my arrival, the International City Managers' Association presented to the existing council at that time, and the mayor, a ICMA report which comprehensively explained the need for the department to create a twofold document, first being a comprehensive community risk assessment standards of cover, which is the primary services being provided by Emergency Services Consulting, Inc. And then, a follow-on to that is a strategic management plan. Over the course of the last probably eight to 10 years, our senior staff has been basically reduced, that if I had the added capacity of overhead to provide this service in-house, that would be our preferred approach as well. However, with only four to five senior leaders to kind of guide that, we already have pretty full workloads, and this is the most expeditious and expedient means to get there. But more importantly, it's also one that we're using outside professional facilitation in order to kind of engage the community in the process. So, it's not us dictating, it's the community dictating. That's why our process is going this route instead of doing it in-house.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Nate. Your motion?
Mayor, I make a motion to accept or approve items EH and I.
Second. Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to ordinances, consent agenda. And Maureen, read just 9A, since we're pulling 9B.
Item 9A, adopt ordinance number 5061-1601, amending Title IV, Chapter 4-7. Alcoholic liquor, renaming Chapter 4-7, deleting Section 4-7-2, amending Section 4-7-6, and renumbering as appropriate of the Prescott City Code, adding a severance clause, and providing for penalties.
Okay, hear a motion on 9A?
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance, consent agenda item 9A.
Second. Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you. Let's open discussion on item 9B. And let's have Maureen read that, please, real quick first.
Item B, adopt ordinance number 5057-1597, authorizing the Second Amendment to Commercial Lease Agreement Number 2001-257 between the City of Prescott and Arizona Public Service Company.
Okay, let's open for discussion. Councilman Good?
Yeah, I understand. This was a 20-year contract that went into effect in 2001. And apparently, there was an error in the contract calculations for a ratio with the Consumer Price Index. So, I'm not sure what this error is.
Councilman Good, it's, the inflationary adjustment was mistakenly put at 8% a year. Is that correct?
As a flat statement rather than not to exceed...
At a minimum.
It was supposed to say not to exceed 8%, and instead it said not less than 8%.
Yes.
So...
So, they've been paying 8% times 15 years, 140... Yeah, it's been pretty nice for us.[1186.74][1186.74](laughing) But obviously, to continue with arrangements, APS would like something that's a little bit more market reasonable, and that's the reason.
Perfect sense.
Yes.
Thank you for that.
Anything else? Otherwise, we hear motion?
Mayor, I recommend to adopt ordinance number 5057-1597.
I'll second that.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Okay, thank you. Let's move into item 10, regular agenda.
Item A, point three, council members to the City Council Subcommittee for Water Issues.
Mayor, I would like to move to appoint Jim Lamerson, Steve Siskah, and Steve Blair to the City Council Subcommittee for Water Issues.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Okay, item 10B.
Mayor, I would like to move to appoint Billy Orr, Steve Blair, Jim Lamerson to the City Council Subcommittee for Appointments.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you. Item 10C.
Approve Amendment Number One for the Design-Build Services with AMEC Foster Wheeler for Stage Two Construction for the Granite Creek Dam Outlet Rehabilitation Project.
Thank you. Steve Oros of Public Works presenting this item today for the second stage of the dam rehabilitation program that we're working on. This item is for construction of the, primarily, the wet side of the dam, some improvements to the gate valve on the larger, or the smaller valve, the 36-inch, and some minor improvements on the dry side for the larger valve, the 48-inch. This is stage two. Stage three is going to be coming here very shortly, because it has a, they're finalizing the design for the rest of the project, but one of the items has got like a nine-month lead time to get the certain gate valve. So, that'll be coming very shortly, back to you with a guaranteed maximum price. This is another guaranteed maximum price contract that we've negotiated with the design-build contracting team. And if there's any other questions, be glad to answer them.
Councilman Blair?
Just one more, so I can hear you say it.
Sure.
How long will this valve last? That's an expensive valve.
A long time.[1368.51][1368.83](laughing)
Is there a warranty on this valve?
There's, we have a normal two-year warranty on all work, which is standard. However, the valve manufacturer may have an additional warranty?
Not sure about additional warranties, but how long is the valve going to last? The existing valves on the dam go back to the original construction of it in, I don't know, 1931.
So, 70-plus years.
Yes. And that's what this valve will, should be able to manage also. This valve is going in on the wet side of the dam, 1919, the existing valves are from. So, this valve will go on the wet side of the dam. So, then, from here on in the future, any work that needs to be done on the dry side with work or maintenance on the valves there and/or problems with them, then this one will be on the opposite side. It's a knife gate. It'll slide up and down on the front of it in order to allow work on the other side of the dam.
Maybe we should just leave it, why don't we leave it open and drain all the silt out of there first?
This valve does not have silt above it. The other one does, as we've identified.
Councilman Good?
Well, I just want to make sure everyone understands that we don't have a lot of options here. This has to be fixed.
Yes.
So, we've got water quality issues, water resource issues that have to be met, and it's got to get fixed.
That's correct. And it's, this is the first time it's had a significant maintenance effort on it. There's been minor maintenance over the last 100 years, but it does, these things do last a long time.
Thank you.
Councilman Siskah?
Thank you. Steve, I just had a reference question. With road projects, we always get an engineer's estimate of what they think it's going to cost. Do we do that exercise with these situations?
Not in the same format. When you do a, in the design-build type of project delivery, which this project is a design-build, or when you go to a C-Mar, Construction Manager at Risk, you, the city, the designer, and the contractor work collaboratively on the design and agree on a price. It's not that we guess a price over here and then see what the contractor gives us. It's all open book. We discuss what's needed, what the pros and cons are of different things. And when we're all satisfied that it meets the design intent, meets our standards, maintenance, operation funding constraints, and the contractor says, yes, I can build it for that price, we agree on a price. So, it's more a negotiated price.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Any public?
Yes. Ralph Hess?
Good afternoon. I just have a question that actually applies to probably all three phases of this project. I noticed in the memorandum that it indicated that the source of the funds to pay for this were coming out of the water fund. And so, my question is, are there any other sources of the funds that are going to be paying for this project, such as Watson Lake Recreation Fees? Or is the full burden going to be borne by water users?
Would you like me to respond? The full burden will be on the water fund.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
No, Mayor.
Anything else, Steve?
No. Appreciate your time. And if there's any other questions, be glad to answer them.
I don't see any at this point. Ready for motion?
Mayor, move to approve city contract number 2018-037A1.
Second. Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Craig. All right, let's move on to agenda item 10D.
Adopt ordinance number 5060-1600, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement with the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona from its Clean Water Revolving Fund Program, delegating the determination of certain matters relating thereto to the Budget Finance Director of the City, providing for the transfer of certain monies and making certain covenants and agreements with respect thereto, authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by such loan agreement, and this ordinance, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, Mark?
Thank you. Mark Woodfill, Finance Director. This is to finance three major wastewater projects, primarily our centralization projects and the SunDog Forest Main or Trunk Main project. The, we started this about a year and a half ago with WIFA. We've had to go through an extension. There's been a lot of issues related to this because of environmental studies and other things. Again, WIFA offers us a very affordable financing means, and we were also able to work with the WIFA staff, which was very helpful in taking a new policy to the WIFA board to allow us to expand the term from 20 years to 30 years to make it a lot more affordable for our utilities fund, our wastewater fund, who, which does have a lot of projects coming up. So, that was an important step for us. With the financing benefits of using WIFA is they use an index off of a AAA bond rating, which of course is better than our AA bond rating by 1A, very good. And they also give us a subsidy. And our subsidy on this project is 20%, which means they're using EPA funds to pay 20% of our interest costs. So, with all those things, if we were able to close this loan today, for the 30-year term, it would have an interest rate of about 2.1%. We're hopeful to close it by the end of the month or the first week of February, as soon as the comment period is done on the environmental study, which is why we have an emergency clause on this ordinance, so that we can act before the 30 days is up. With that, I'd be glad to answer any specific questions.
Thank you, Mark. Mayor Protem?
Yes, Mark, I just want to thank you for negotiating this 30-year, because that does save our citizens that pay this rate quite a bit of money. So, thank you.
And WIFA staff with Trish Icognito, their executive, was very helpful in getting that done.
As I understand... As I understand, it had been limited to a community that was in more need than Prescott, but then you negotiated that and got that policy changed, and so thank you very much.
Sure.
Councilman Good?
Explain to me why we need to go 30 years. I mean, that's going to add 10 years at, at least your calculations that were provided here were 3.2% interest, but you're saying that EPA is going to buy that down to 2.1%?
The rate, again, the loan documents that were attached are draft loan documents. The final documents will be coming out near the end of the month. The projection at the time this was put together, and looking at the rates today, they've only moved a little bit. The triple, the index is at 2.63. That brings us down to 2.1% when you take away the 20% subsidy. The reason we want to go to 30 years instead of 20 is these are 50-year assets. This allows us to stretch out the cost of those assets over the useful life of those assets, preventing us from having to do a significant wastewater rate increase, you know, over the next few years to make the, all the rate users over the next 20 years pay for this longer-term asset. And at 2%, it's a good time to get into a 30-year loan. Again, a 20-year loan is only 16 basis points or .16% cheaper.
Well, that was my concern. If we're going to add 10 years at 3%, that's a pretty significant amount of additional interest, but 2.1% is, it's almost free money.
It is.
Quite, but it's close.
It's real close. One-year CDs are at 2% at some banks right now, so 2.1% is good.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments from the council? Any public?
Yes, Ralph Hess?
Just have a couple of questions. First of all, will this loan impact affluent rates that will be charged in order to pay the debt service? And with regard to the emergency clause, I understand what Mr. Woodfill said with regard to the need to close the loan within 30 days, but I'm looking at the emergency measure requirements under the charter, which require that emergency measures be for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, or safety. And my question is, does closing a loan within 30 days meet that criteria?
I'll let Mark, you want to address the first question, the rate one?
Sure. Obviously, all the debts of the wastewater fund are used when we do a rate study. When we do a rate study, we look at affluent rates. How it will directly impact affluent rates is depending on a lot of factors. Our affluent sales are significantly small. The cost directly associated with those is significantly low. So the last time we did a rate study, they were set at comparable rates at other municipalities, which is the way you have to do it when you have such a small factor of your overall utility. But they will be figured in all the rates that we put together.
Regarding the emergency clause, I know this question came up before. This has to do, the emergency clauses are allowed under state law, which is a little bit broader than our charter, for, to preserve the public peace, health, safety, and welfare. And so that welfare provision is critical. And the court cases have said that preserving the public welfare also includes the fiscal welfare of the city or the financial welfare of the city. So in my opinion, the preserving the public welfare would allow us to adopt an emergency clause, undertake advantage of the financial, the financial advantage of closing in less than 30 days. So it does fall under that state law provision, which is in Title 16, 19, sorry.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
No, Mayor.
Entertained a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 5060-1600 and declaring an emergency.
Second. Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, I'd like to read a quote from Martin Luther King Jr. Darkness cannot drive out darkness. Only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate. Only love can do that. This meeting is adjourned.